I can have your attention. Hello? We've got a, we've got a robust crowd this evening. It's good to see all these folks in the, in the meeting room with us this afternoon. We are calling to order the September Tifton City Council Meeting. It is 5:30. And there are agendas by Ms. LaCretia back here if you, anyone would like to, to grab an agenda and follow along with us. At this time, I would like to introduce Pastor Rodney Owen with First Baptist Church of Tipton. Rodney is going to give our prayer. And Rodney, I invite you to come up and, and we'll, we'll listen attentively. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's join together in prayer. Father, we thank you that you have given the place of authority, Lord, but help us to remember that what your words were through Jesus were clear, that all authority is given by you. Therefore, Lord, tonight, I ask you, God, that you give this council wisdom, remembering the words of James, chapter one, verse number five, that if any man lacked wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all men liberally. I pray, God, for you to give them wisdom, give them guidance, bless them as they take on the business of this city. And I pray, God, bless their steps. And, Lord, I pray that you would just do what needs to be done through them, Lord, we pray. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Owen. Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Lieutenant Dunston with the Tifton Police Department to offer our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant Dunston. All right, gentlemen, we are missing two councilmen, as you can see. Councilman Frank Sales is under the weather, so he will not be with us this evening. And Councilman Terrell will be joining us late. He had a previous appointment, so he'll be coming in hopefully in the next 20 or 30 minutes and we'll, we'll pick up. But we do have a quorum with the three of us, so we will move forward with our agenda. At this time, I would like to take to, I'd like to take a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mayor, I'd like to change the order in new business, moving eight and nine to eleven and twelve, and then move 10, 11, and 12 to eight, nine, and 10.
So we'll move.
So we're basically moving eight and nine to the bottom of the new business list.
Okay. And then everything else will stay on. Okay. All right. Does that make sense? Got it? Okay. All right, so we have a motion to that effect to make that change. We're not adding or changing anything, just changing the order. And so Wes has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes, and those were emailed to us, and they are in our council packet, so we've got several to, to approve. If you want to, if you haven't read those already, please do. And then I'll take a motion. Actually, we just have one set of minutes to approve, so I'm sorry about that.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Jessica, have you got the information for me, just where in? Kristen? All right, Ms. Kristen Morrison, if you'll join me down here.
All right. We rely heavily on our citizens to volunteer for various boards and commissions and organizations of the city overseas, and so I'm very happy tonight to introduce Ms. Kristen Morrison, and she has volunteered to serve with our Historic Preservation Commission, so we're very glad for that. So I'm going to administer now my oath of office for that particular, particular position. All you have to do is listen, and then everything is written to you to say aye or a no, and then we'll sign and we'll adjourn. So I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. So the oath of office is that you, Kristen Morrison, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission of this city, and that you are supported within the Charter of the City of Tifton, as well as the consultation and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America, that you shall attend to all meetings of the body to which you have been appointed unless providentially hindered, that you shall abide by the standards for compliance and adherence adopted by the City Council, and the rules of disclosure after full thereto, and that you shall comply by the standards for compliance and adherence, you shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which you have been appointed, and that you shall attend to the city's expense, any training handed by the State of Georgia, and that you shall also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the City of Tifton, to keep your eye on. Congratulations, you are now a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Congratulations.
We appreciate the volunteerism that is always present in our community. Now we have two special presentations. And I'm going to ask Buffy Hankinson, Buffy, if you'll join me down front. My proclamation that we are very honored to be on your behalf today. You want to tell us a little bit about what you do right now, why you're wearing purple and all these things, or what's going on?
I've said that Alzheimer's Association, I have two organizations involved, you're your manager, and your head of COVID. Right now, in America, there are about six million people living with Alzheimer's disease. In Georgia alone, over 140,000, over 140,000 folks who are living with Alzheimer's. It's a progressive detrimental disease. It's the most expensive disease in America, and we're here to raise awareness and, and claim purple for Tifton for the month of September, and also let you know about our Walked End Alzheimer's coming up here in Tifton on October 27th. It's at AVAC, starts at 8:00 a.m. And I will say this, we will be done before Georgia-Florida game. That's always something important. But we're here, we serve 36 counties across southwest Georgia, and we just want to bring awareness to those who have the disease and the caregivers who are suffering a lot of wrong with them.
Actually, I just want to say, and Julie said it earlier, we rely on volunteers, and the city of Tifton has been amazing for us. We, it seems like every time we ask, people say yes. Even came in here tonight, and we had people talking about the walk and how they want to support, how they want to help. So moved the office over here about seven years ago now, which is hard to believe it's been that long, but you guys just continue to amaze me. It's just, they call it the friendly city, and it's not a name they just pulled out of the air. It's, it's true. So thank you. And so you've got to say, first responders, the police department, fire department, thank you guys for what you do too, because we really appreciate it.
All right. Our proclamation says, whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability, it also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the world's leading voluntary health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research for more than 5 million Americans living with Alzheimer's in the United States and the people who care for them. And whereas the month of September has been chosen in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the educational programs and support services provided by the Alzheimer's Association. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and urge our citizens to help ease this burden for individuals, families, and caregivers as we search for a cure, and witness whereof, I set my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Tifton to be affixed this 17th day of September. So let me sign this for you, and it will be official. And so everyone is encouraged to be supportive, wear purple, participate in the walk, volunteer time, donate money, anything they can, if I know what I'm doing, I definitely appreciate it. So thank you, but we appreciate it, so much, what you all do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Everyone's picture with you. I bet. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite Bonnie Sales and our friends with the Adult Education and Family Literacy Program to come up to the front. I hear you're mine, I'll shoot you a question. Another excellent group of volunteers, and folks who are very committed and, and very passionate in what you do, and they do a lot of great things. Everybody, do you want to talk about literacy, adult education?
I can't.
Okay.
I've got the same creed.
I've got it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think this is our president of the board for literacy.
That's right. We are literacy volunteers at Tif, Tiff County. I want to thank the mayor and the city council members for having us here today. Literacy volunteers works through tutors to break the cycle of illiteracy here in the county and the city. Too many children go to kindergarten, they don't even know their alphabet. We work with parents and grandparents to help them, so that fosters down through those children in our communities. We would not be able to do it without the support of the community, so thank you. This year, our 19th Annual Carnival of Knowledge is Thursday, September 27th, and we are excited to announce our first platinum sponsor, which is the Howard Center. So thank you to Dr. Drew and Kayla Howard, Melissa Carter, and the team. They have a check here to present us to the organization, which is going to go a long, long way in our community. So thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We just are excited to work with the, and to support the Volunteers for Literacy. The work they do is amazing, and we're, the, all of us are the beneficiaries of that. Us, we have employees who are direct beneficiaries of that. We have many patients who are, and we see the result every day of their amazing work. So thank you very much, and we're excited to support it. Thank you for letting us be here.
That is impressive.
We're going to have something special this year, too. The Howard, the Howard Group Center is sponsoring an audience participation event, so it's available.
Oh, wow. So there's more time?
Yes.
This is exciting. Well, let me tell you about our proclamation. Whereas approximately one in five adults cannot read or write in Georgia, roughly 1.1 million adults over the age of 18 have not completed high school or received a GED diploma. And whereas illiteracy rates are highest among the economically disadvantaged and are closely associated with unemployment, high crime rates, and welfare challenges. And whereas parents who cannot read or write perpetuate an intergenerational cycle of illiteracy, as they lack the skills to teach their children such daily tasks as how to read a medicine bottle, follow a bus schedule, do comparative shopping, make correct change, or complete school homework. And whereas illiteracy is a social problem of American society, which can be alleviated through increased public awareness and a broader support for volunteer literacy programs on the local, state, and national levels. And whereas 20% of the adults in the city have a high school diploma or a GED certificate. And whereas residents of Tifton benefit from the services offered by the literacy volunteers of Tifton, Tiff County, which include basic skills instruction, GED, GED test preparation, GED test fee scholarships, and English language classes. And whereas the community's support of literacy volunteers of Tifton and Tiff County helps to improve the quality of life where we all live and work. Now therefore, I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, do hereby proclaim September 23rd through 29th as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and September 27th as Literacy Day in Tifton, Georgia. So congratulations. Let me sign this, and it will become official. All right. It is official. Victor, I will hand this off to you as the president of the board, and say thank you very, very much for all the hard work that you do. I've had the opportunity to kind of speak to some of the classes before, and I tell you, it's just, it's amazing. So you are, you're making a significant difference, and we just appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the time for public comments, and I have just one person who has signed in to speak, and I will call on Mr. Spud Bowen. Spud, if you'll come up to the table here and...
I'm Spud Bowen, 811 Murray Avenue, Tifton, Georgia.
You know how this goes.
Dr. Howard's right here. Dr. Howard. Ladies and gentlemen, he not only does this, I'm also president of the Touchdown Club here in Tifton. And not only is he a super sponsor of the football team, but every Thursday, if our kids need it, they get B-12, B-complex shots.
Oh, wow.
And fluids if they needed it, spend a harder week of practice. And they go communifying and thanking, on the thank you page. There are 150 football players that really, it is an OPGY implants.
Yeah. Who knew?
And he does sort of, he's...
He does an awful lot. You are absolutely right.
Really does. Thank you, Dr. Howard, and your staff. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here today to, which I'm sure you've probably got a lot of phone calls since yesterday about the article that appeared in the paper yesterday. And the first thing I want to say is, when, 2005, I don't think there was anybody on this, was on this council. There's not anybody in management that's here. However, agreements are agreements. And so I would urge you, for the sake of economic development for the future of Tifton and Tiff County, because we have great schools, we have a great location, that you get through this as quick as you can and resolve it, so that all of us can be okay. Because I pay county taxes, just like you.
Yes.
So I kind of feel like I'm getting hit both ways.
Yeah.
Y'all filed suit, the county turned around and had to answer the suit, so I'm getting hit both ways. And, you know, there's a lot of smoke there. We need to put out that fire, and, and do it quickly, for the sake of this county, this city, and this entire community. The other thing I want to speak on, and I forgot to do it, is the pension plan. We originate, I was part of the original city commission that changed from GMA to AMB, I think it is now. I have no money with them, they don't control anything that I have because of that agreement I did in 1994. I just felt like that was wrong. But I do know that we gave them $3.4 million. I know over the period of years, you put in $3 million. So that's $6.4 million, and that account is now worth almost $24 million with that small contribution. And I wish I had had some money to put with them. I would enjoy that return. And I would ask you to please think long and hard with that before putting into GMA, because I'm worried about what the future liability of the city will be by going into that big pool. And I just ask you to please consider that. I thank you all for what you do. I know you're all going to retire to the pummels off all this big salary that you get from serving up here, and for all this argument. But thank you for serving, and again, I urge you to do it steadily, but do it quickly. And let's put this to rest. Thank you, some of it.
Thank you, Spud. I appreciate, appreciate your comments. I'd like to kind of piggyback on that and make a statement to our employees. And many of you are here tonight, and I appreciate our employees being with us tonight. And I want you to hear the words that I'm going to say, but not only these, my words, these are the words of this city council and our management team. Nobody, nobody likes to get in front of a judge. Nobody likes to go to court. Nobody lays awake at night and says, how can we stir up controversy in this community? That is not who we are. That is not how we function, and that is not how we do business. We all, every single one of us, are Tiff County residents, and Mr. Bowen, you are absolutely right, we all pay city and county taxes. So to our employees, I would like to say that the city did file a declaratory judgment seeking resolution to longstanding issues we've had with the county over water and sewer services. And Rob, you may smack my hand a little bit, but the county acknowledged that that was an appropriate action. And a declaratory action is nothing but, party A says it should be this way, party B says it should be this way, and neither party can come to resolution on what the answer is. So you go before the court, and you say, here's everything, help us figure this out. Help us come to resolution, so we can put this to bed, we can move forward and be the great community that we are. A declaratory action was filed, and because it involves a court, it is called a lawsuit. But it's really, it's kind of throwing yourself in, in front of the court to say, help us, we have got a tangled up mess here that neither party can agree on, and we're not going to get anywhere until someone helps us untangle this and puts it to rest. That's what we did. We received a countersuit that included not just that, but a list as long as my arm of other allegations. They are seeking, they being Tiff County, over $22 million in damages from the city of Tifton, the very residents that are also residents of Tiff County. Let that sink in. And you're right, you are right, Spud. You are absolutely right. We are city of Tifton residents, and we are Tiff County residents. I want everyone to know that this city intends on defending the allegations made by the county vigorously and aggressively. We've discussed these allegations with our legal team and feel that these allegations that were made against the city are without merit. The city officials will not be making any further comment regarding these issues, since it involves pending litigation. But I want you to hear from me, city of Tifton employees, every single one of you, and city of Tifton residents, we will not take this lying down. We will move judiciously, professionally, and we will do everything in our power to make sure that resolution is received and that we come together as a community once again. We have an extremely competent and experienced legal team that's handling this case, and we are confident for a favorable outcome for all residents, regardless of your address. So city of Tifton employees, please know that is the truth. That is how we feel, that is how we stand here before you tonight, declaring that statement. So I'll be glad to, we may, if you want to ask some questions, we're very limited. I'll, I'll probably have to defer anything to Rob. I don't know if there's any, any comments to be made regarding that, if any of the other council would like to make a comment. Look at that ring. But I want you to hear that from me, and from your council, and from your management team. You like that ring? Okay. Well, then, let's move on. We've got a lot to go over this evening. All right. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And I do want to remind those in attendance that we do have a workshop that occurs about a week or two weeks prior to our council meeting, and that at that time, we do discuss all of the items that we'll be discussing and voting on tonight. At the workshop, we do not vote. We save that for, for the, the regular council meeting. So we have four items in our consent agenda. We can take those together, or we can take them independently, however y'all would prefer to do that.
Take them together.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Some move.
All right. So we have a motion to approve all four of the consent agenda items, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I will remind you, we did change the order under new business, so the next two items are the resolution for the transfer of assets, and then the retirement agreement. I do want to introduce Randy Logan. Randy's kind of over here behind the pillar. Randy is with the Georgia Municipal Association. He and Malika, I'm sorry, Malika, I did not write down your last name. I'm so sorry about that. Malika is the actuary for the plan. Does anyone have any questions, or?
I think we're supposed to do number 10 first, which is the review of the proposed plans for road closures, the hospital.
Yeah. I thought you wanted eight and nine, and then 10.
Basically, eight and nine, everything moves up. Eight and nine goes to 11 and 12, and everything moves up. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm terribly sorry. I misunderstood, I misunderstood. I wrote down something totally different. Okay. All right. Well, let me, let's come back to that. At this time, we are on item number 10, which is the review of the proposed plans for the road closures and realignment to accommodate the hospital expansion. Y'all be careful. Thank you for what you do. Oh, I always, that always makes me nervous. I hate to hear that tone.
Pushing that.
Okay. We're going to talk about the road closure instead. I apologize about that. I wrote down the wrong thing.
Sorry about that.
Keep me straight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and as you recall, we did go over this.
We must have some water issues.
All right. You have a map in front of you of the proposed road closures.
Mayor and council, as you may recall, there was a presentation made by Mr. Chris Dorman at the hospital regarding the new development they want to do. And to do this new development, they are requesting the closure of Portion 18th Street. I think what is shown on your, on your map shows the location of where they would like to make that closure. Goes from Old Omega Road, which I, I mean, sorry, Old Assila Road, that'll then go to the new entrance. In addition to that, closing that section of road, they also are asking to relocate John O'Leary Drive. Basically, that relocation, John O'Leary Drive, will match up with the entrance to the hospital. They are also asking for, I believe it's Lee Avenue and Portion 18th Street and John O'Leary Drive to go from 30-foot right of way, I'm sorry, street, to a 24-foot street. And as, after looking at the land of El McCoy, it appears that those streets could be classified as marginal access streets, which, which is a minimum of 24 feet. So although they're looking for a variance, I really don't know that a variance would be appropriate, but it does appear that because it does fit the definition of a marginal access street, that requirement is 24 feet, so they think that is also doable. So that's what's before the council. I don't believe Mr. Dorman is here tonight, but that's, that's basically their request, and leave up y'all.
Okay.
Is all that property along the, it's 18th Street, is that owned by the hospital now, or?
It is.
They bought all that?
It is. Both sides of the road is hospital property.
You're talking about this, this section right here?
That's in orange, where it wants to be closed.
Okay. Oh, okay, in the orange, okay.
Part of the lawn.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Would that be inserted?
I will take a motion to some effect concerning the road closures and realignment.
So move.
All right. I have two motions. Who wants to claim a? Let's let Mr. Terrell.
All right. So Johnny has made the motion to, to approve.
I would love to second that.
You will second? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just concerned.
I don't think that's an option.
That's not an option.
But we'll take it. We'll take it. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just love Jack.
I'd, I'd...
I know.
If you have a issue, thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we are, now that I'm thoroughly confused on the order that we changed, because I read everything down wrong.
Now you go to 11, which is the new number 10, or number 9.
Well, what if you take five?
This is why I can't...
Now it's a resolution for authorizing the transfer of assets.
Okay. Now we're, okay, we're back in, in order.
Big Randy's up.
And Randy is here. Randy, sorry about that confusion. Now, I will take full blame for that. I wrote things down wrong. I don't know what I was thinking. But we appreciate you being here with us tonight.
No, no. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Again, my name's Randy Logan. I'm Deputy Executive Director at the Georgia Municipal Association in the Retirement and Employee Benefits area. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful that tonight, that, that you will take action to, for this resolution, and to start the process of transferring administration to the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefits System. And by doing so, you'll be joining 288 other local governments from around the, around the state that see the value in our program. This is a, a system that was created by an act of the state legislature in 1965, and, and so I just want to briefly go over some of the benefits of being in the program and answer any questions. Contrary to some belief of some, by joining this system, that you'll lose control of your plan. That's simply not the case. This plan would still belong to the city of Tifton. Mayor and council would be the governing authority in this plan, and all the rules and regulations in the plan would be contained in a city ordinance. The assets in your plan that you have would stay in a retirement trust that belongs to the city of Tifton. And the only purpose for this money, the only thing the money could be used for would be to pay... Basically, that relocation, John O'Leary Drive, will match up with the entrance to the hospital. They are also asking for, I believe it's Lee Avenue and Portion Eighteenth Street and John O'Leary Drive to go from thirty-foot right of way, I'm sorry, street to a twenty-four-foot street. And after looking at the land of El McCoy, it appears that those streets could be classified as marginal access streets, which is a minimum of twenty-four feet. So, although they're looking for a variance, I really don't know that a variance would be appropriate, but it does appear that because it does fit the definition of a marginal access street, that requirement of twenty-four feet, so they think that is also doable. So, that's what's before the council. I don't believe Mr. Dorman is here tonight, but that's basically their request, and leave that to y'all.
Okay.
Is all that property along the Eighteenth Street, is that owned by the hospital now?
It is.
They bought all that?
It is. Both sides of the road is hospital property.
You're talking about this section right here?
It's in orange where it wants to be closed.
Okay. Oh, okay. Not orange. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Take a motion to some effect concerning the road closures and realignment. All right. I have two motions. Who wants to claim a... Let's let Mr. Terrell. All right. So, Johnny has made the motion to approve.
I would love to second that.
You will second? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I don't think that's an option, but we'll take it. We'll take it. That's fine. We just love Jack. Okay. All right. So, now we are... Now that I'm thoroughly confused on the order that we changed because I read everything down wrong. This is why I can't... Okay. Now we're... Okay, we're back in order. Okay. And Randy is here. Randy, sorry about that confusion. Now, I will take full blame for that. I wrote things down wrong. I don't know what I was thinking. But we appreciate you being here with us tonight.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Again, my name's Randy Logan. I'm Deputy Executive Director at the Georgia Municipal Association in the Retirement and Employee Benefits area. I'm hopeful that tonight that you will take action to... For this resolution and to start the process of transferring administration to the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefits System. And by doing so, you'll be joining two-hundred-and-eighty-eight other local governments from around the state that see the value in our program. This is a system that was created by an act of the state legislature in nineteen-sixty-five. And so, I just want to briefly go over some of the benefits of being in the program and answer any questions. Contrary to some belief of some, by joining this system, you'll lose control of your plan. That's simply not the case. This plan would still belong to the City of Tifton. Mayor and council would be the governing authority in this plan, and all the rules and regulations in the plan would be contained in a city ordinance. The assets in your plan that you have would stay in a retirement trust that belongs to the City of Tifton. And the only purpose for this money, the only thing the money could be used for would be to pay the benefits out of the plan or the cost of administering this plan. So, it's still your plan. The benefits in your plan, the money in your plan is still in your trust account. Some of the benefits of belonging to the program to the city are that your assets are combined with the assets of these other two-hundred-and-eighty-eight cities for investment purposes, which is a good thing for the city. It's about two-point... A little over two-point-two billion dollars in total right now. With that kind of assets, that kind of asset base, you can get the better asset managers for a cheaper administrative fee than you can with twenty-five or even fifty or a hundred million dollars. We get some of the best asset managers in the country, and it's shown in our returns. Just as of June thirtieth, the one-year returns were ten-point-three percent. Over three years, eight-point-nine percent. In five years, ten-point-six percent. And the average annual return for thirty-seven years as of the end of twenty-seventeen was nine-point-four-nine percent. Tell you, if I... With my personal investments, if I could have made that, we'd be having this meeting on the back of my yacht. So, that's a great... The benefit of these... Getting these kind of returns is that the city doesn't have to contribute as much money to the plan in order to provide the benefits for the employees. So, that's number one. Number two is you get the economies of scale. We have professional staff in Atlanta. That's all we do is retirement. And by having these people and having the other cities in this program, you get the benefits of economies of scale for administrative fee purposes. So, the administrative fee is much less. And you also get the benefits of our professional legal staff in Atlanta, which is part of your administrative fee. There are no other costs to doing any legal work to the plan. They also keep your plan up to date with any changes in state and federal law so that your plan is always in compliance with law. So, that's benefits for the city. Some benefits to where the employees are, they've got a standardized plan. There aren't any really odd things in the plan because it's kind of standardized. For example, in your previous plan, picking a beneficiary was not very flexible. That's something that has been changed in this plan to give your employees a little more flexibility and a little more freedom to make the person the beneficiary they would like to have with their money. We also provide regular education to your employees so they understand and can actually plan for retirement. We have two full-time staff that that's all they do, and I understand that they've already been working with Denise and the Human Resources to plan some scheduled meetings for that. We also provide an annual benefits estimate to the employees so they understand what their benefit is. And we're actually in the process of changing that to where we can pull in all of the retirement sources to give them a full and complete picture of what their retirement could be using the defined benefit plan, any defined contribution savings they have, and even projections on Social Security. So, in one small booklet, they can see all of the benefits that they might get in retirement. And I think another one, and finally, is portability of service. By belonging to this system, time and credit at other cities can travel through the system to help employees get vested here faster. So, for vesting purposes and for benefit eligibility purposes, someone could come from another city and have that service travel with them for those two purposes, which makes it easier for you to recruit and hire other employees from other local governments. So, unless there are other questions, I won't bore you with any more details, but I just wanted to make a few brief comments about that and make myself available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Randy, on the liquidation of the assets now, I'm assuming you're in close contact with Richard?
Yes, sir.
Specifically bonds?
Yes, sir.
You were coming up on September thirtieth, end of the quarter, so the timing is going to be such that...
That is correct. Yes. That is correct. I've been in touch with our investment advisors on our end, and we've had our accounting people and finance people. They're available. I'm not sure if they've spoken to Mr. Mooney recently, but they have spoken in the past, and he... There was just an email, I believe, last Thursday or Friday that Pete had forwarded to me from Mr. Mooney saying, hey, I need to speak to someone in your finance department.
And so, I know when we talked several months ago, there was a time within the month if all this money got transferred at a certain time, then we got full benefit for that month.
Sure. Sure.
That's going to happen?
Yes. That's the plan to happen. It depends on the transfer from Mooney, from Mr. Mooney. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, he's clear, because he and I have talked about it as well.
Sure. I can touch base with him again to make sure that we're all on the same page or to reconfirm that we're all on the same page, but I can do that.
We do not want to lose a month's earnings because of a timing issue.
No. No, you do not. You do not want to lose any money. So, we're going to work to make sure that you do not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, so I want to just comment. Over a year ago, you asked me to look at the retirement program. In short, a lot has happened over twenty years. I certainly respect that. But obviously, with savings and the plan, and we've had a couple of different variations. GMA has helped us to cure that. But there's two things I want to make clear. Number one is our retirees, nothing is going to happen towards the pension, what the retirees are getting. There's not going to be any late checks. There's not going to be any changes for them except a change in management. So, I wanted to make sure that... And then for current employees, if you're part of the old plan, that doesn't change either. Everything is carried over from our old plan, so really, nothing is going to take effect. We did have a couple enhancements, which I think Randy mentioned. But lastly, communications from GMA, from my office down to the employees to make sure that we communicate what is going on with our retirement. That is very, very important to us, and we're going to do that. But lastly, I wanted to thank Denise and Karen publicly for the work that they did on this. I can't tell you the hours and the amount of information that was skewed, missing, et cetera, that they put together on behalf of the City of Tifton. So, a great seven-months work, and I can tell you, not weird. It was a good exercise and audit, but we are certainly in the right direction. And I thank Randy and his team for helping us along.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Pete, for that clarification.
Let me make one other comment, just because I've been very involved, as you know, over the last couple of years. And Richard Mooney and I have become close. We've had numerous conversations about this whole thing. I was hesitant. Peter will tell you, and Randy will tell you. I've pushed back, pushed back. We've had lots of conversations. But at the end of the day, GMA and GMAT can earn a higher return. Richard admits that. Now, because the way things are set up and the way they can invest, that Richard doesn't have that benefit, and he understands that. So, we've got that. Even in the administrative fee, big difference. I mean, it just... And again, Richard and I have had that conversation, and he understands that as well. But the biggest piece is turning this over to a group that really has full control over how money is invested. And it takes it out because the council... And nothing, anybody, past whatever, you've either been involved with pensions or you have not. It's either been a curse to me or, I guess, a benefit to have been involved with pensions for twenty-something years and understand what it is. And again, Richard understands. Taking it out of the council's hands and putting it in a group with GMA, and they control how much you keep in cash, how much you have in bonds, and how much you have in stocks, and that's huge. That is a huge thing to the residents of the City of Tifton that are funding this, the employees that are receiving the benefit. And so, you hear lots of things, but that's coming from somebody who resisted and was opposed, but over the last year, come to realize that this is the best thing for the employees, and it's the best thing for the taxpayer. And it's just a benefit. And Richard and I, one-on-one, realizes and understands and agrees in terms of that this is best for the citizens.
Thank you very much, Jack. I want you to know how much I appreciate the trust you have in us, and I'll let you know that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that bears out and that you can keep trusting us.
Thank you. All right. That being said, we need to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of assets first. So, I will take a motion to that effect if that's what you so desire.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion to approve the transfer of assets. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. The next part of this would be to approve the organs adopting the retirement agreement with the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System. If there's any discussion about that, any... Pete, do you have any information we're sharing on that?
No. In the last exchange, I did... You know, we had detailed talks about this. Some had different thoughts. Since I got all in and lumped it, some of the enhancements that we talked about, just for the folks that are here, that, for instance, if you served any time in the military, you would get one year towards your retirement. That's in the new plan. The others, talking about, Randy mentioned, the death benefit for spouses, we corrected that. Some of the changes, the portability, which is pretty standard, but we talked about the percentages of contributions. So, that has stayed, and we talked about a couple of other things, but all in all, it's well-presented. And we talked about the public safety side, so however you want to approach that is really up to your discussion. But we are... I think we're solid, and I'm proud to deliver something like this to our employees.
Mayor, I was not here at our last meeting. I know you guys discussed this, but I want to make a statement and say that I'm a huge proponent. I think there was some discussion about changing the years of service and age from eighty to seventy-five for sworn-in public safety personnel. I think those guys, they see a lot of things during their time in service.
And gals.
Rather than...
And gals. We have gals. We have gals.
And girls. Guys and girls, and everybody. But I would like to see that changed. I don't know what was discussed in the meeting, but I would like to see it go from eighty to seventy-five if the council so wishes. I'd like to make a motion to that effect to make those changes as well as changing the years of service and age from seventy... To seventy-five from eighty for sworn-in public safety personnel.
Okay. This would be in addition to the recommendations for the one-year military?
The one-year military, the change in the...
For the death benefits?
The death benefits and percentages contributed.
Yes, the three percent. And right now, the way the plan is, is we have a couple variations. So, you could be sixty-two plus your years of service. You could be other ages and all equals eighty. And then, you know, from our talks, I did the public safety exclusively, a combination of eighty, your age plus your years of service equals eighty.
Yeah, that's what I want to change, seventy-five.
Okay. All right. Is that a motion?
That is a motion. So moved.
All right. Is there a second? Okay. I was going to say, I can make a... I can't make a motion, but I can second. But you want me to say... Okay. All right. I will second that, Wes. Thank you. All right. I will call for any further discussion.
And nothing... I mean, I take positions and people out of it just in theory, but to go to seventy-five or you think about eighty, somebody's sixty with twenty years, right? Versus sixty-five with, you know, you do the math, you know, and so, fifty-five and twenty. I don't know. I struggle retiring at fifty-five with twenty years as a seventy-five and realize this person can live thirty more years, and we're already into a defined benefit plan, realizing that we can get into that discussion about defined benefit where we said we're going to get the same amount for the next twenty-five years or thirty years. Okay? Lots of studies show that cities are going broke over defined benefit plans. They can't afford them, which is exactly why private industry got rid of them twenty-five and thirty years ago. So, to now make it more lucrative, and somebody can retire at fifty-five, and how many years is that, and what's the cost to taxpayers? Versus a sixty... At least go to sixty and twenty, that's a pretty darn good deal to retire at sixty and twenty years, and you're going to get paid for the next, could be twenty-five and some odd year. That is a big... You won't find that anywhere else.
Well, but let me address, this is specifically on the seventy-five number. It's specifically for public safety. And I think that... I think that those men and women who work in law enforcement, firefighting, any type of public safety first responder position, one, they're putting their lives on the line every single day in a different way than any other city employee is involved in how they take care of the community. And I think that they suffer as a result of that, and I think they suffer burnout. I think that they suffer challenges and issues that are hard to deal with, that are different than someone maybe who has been in a, maybe an accounting position or customer service position. We also need to recruit public safety, and if there's any carrot that we can offer that would help them to make a decision to come to Tifton, we have a great... It sounds like we're going to have a great retirement package, but if we could offer something special for our first responders and those sworn police officers and certified firefighters, to me, that's a... You're not talking about a large percentage of the city employee base. So, that's why I support it. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do for those people who are in a very different level of interaction and involvement with the community than the rest of the city employees.
We're putting them on the spot. We're putting them on the spot. I don't want to put them on the spot. What were you saying, Pete?
Not to... Well, if someone wants to say something, Randy, not to put them on the spot from an actuary standpoint. He may have some statistics about, you know, ages and percentages. Okay.
You may refer to the resident first?
Please.
Mayor, council. Mr. Jack, I think to your point where you're saying sixty-five and fifteen is probably unheard of in the public safety sector. People starting in this business at forty is almost unheard of unless they come from another department, transfer over into this department. Majority of people is going to be in their early twenties or the late of thirty before they get started in the public safety area. As you say, as the firemen in the police department, as far as fire department goes, you know, we wear seventy-five pounds of gear along with our body. We're doing physical fitness every day. We constantly talking about saving on healthcare. And as your age rises, what's going to happen? You know, you're going to start having problems. Getting up at two or three o'clock in the morning when you're fifty-five or sixty years old, jumping on the truck, going to a call, jumping off the truck, grabbing a hose line, pulling that hose line out, going inside a burning building, pulling someone out of that burning building is very taxing on a young man, much less an older person. So, that's going to be one of the biggest fears that I have, is we're going to start losing firefighters. Because everybody, and as I told one of the previous city managers, he said, why are you worried about this if you're an officer? I said, everybody's not an officer. We still got firefighters that's sixty years old. We got firefighters that's fifty-five or so. Everybody doesn't make it up that chain. So, being said that, me myself, as far as the fire department, who protects the citizens of this city, number one, we don't want them getting hurt. We don't want the citizens being hurt because they're getting hurt because they can't do the job because of their age. Healthcare cost is going to rise because of their age, no matter how much we do to stay in shape and eat well, and we are doing a great job of that. Our physical agility test this year dropped by four or five minutes because of our physical fitness plan when we start. But it's the same point, is you can't roll back years of constantly answering those calls. And it's not just physical, it is mental. You know, three times I had the privilege of helping save someone's life. Twenty-seven times I didn't. That's in my mind. Think about it every day. They think about it every day. That's something we deal with every day. And if we can help that by getting out of that... And if we can help that by getting out of this at an earlier age to go on, nobody's gonna quit working. They're gonna continue to work somewhere at a lower-paced job that's not quite as stressful, physical or mental. So, that's why I'm in favor of it, that's why the guys are here, they're in favor of it, they do it every day, you know, I don't know what else to tell you, except, you know, we, we plead in our caves for y'all too, please help us.
Thank you.
And, and I, I appreciate, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I, you yourself know, I'm certainly, you know, support firemen, policemen, that kind of, you push to raise, you know, the pay, as we, to raise the staffing, if you recall a year ago. So, you know, my position has been, a lot of people come and stay four, five years, six years and are gone, okay? Well, pension doesn't do anything on them. I'm saying, to me, you change the pension, raise the pay several dollars an hour, where people see it, the, the firemen see it, the policemen see it in their paycheck today. That's why I, you know, I, I push for that as much if not more than, than the other, because it, it's a week-to-week trying to make ends meet.
But a lot of these...
Versus somebody twenty-five years down the road, most people are living, what, you know, what, what am I gonna do?
Most of these guys, they've been here for a long time, and same thing with our police department, they've been here...
Uh, uh...
Okay, raise your hand if you've been here five years, at least five years.
Uh...
So, I mean...
About ten years.
Ten years. I mean, these guys, they, they're not going anywhere, and, I mean, you're always gonna have some turnover, I'm just asking you to support it.
I, I don't know, what I, what I hear from the chief and the turnover, this other one, we, we, is different from anecdotal data that I'm hearing right now.
I know, I know, but we need something to attract and keep, not just firefighters, but, but police officers and...
And my, my position is, are they coming looking at the pension? Are they coming looking at what's the starting pay, what's the pay gonna be, you know, which one is more important? I would, and, and I can figure everybody, other than, I know somebody left a position to go somewhere else, and I said, well, you know, they said, well, it's much better benefit, I said, what about the pension? Oh, well, it's a, it's a three percent defined contribution, much better than, than what we got here. I said, really? Clearly they didn't know what, and this was somebody in the, this was somebody in the office that should've known better, but, but they didn't. I think most people look, if they get the starting pay, what they're gonna be in a year to a year, tends to be more, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, I just...
Okay.
Well, we appreciate what y'all do for us. As far as the pay, you've raised the pay, that's been a blessing. You've given us full staffing again, that is, that is great, because we, we struggled for a little bit. We're crawling through, we're going through, we're, we're, um, we're listening to what you're saying about these reports in the paper, as they do get old, you know, as city employees, that does get old, um, you know, you worry about that, so that's just a little bit more to worry about. Um, but as, as Captain Cooper told me, you know, the studies show that firefighters live, live ten to fifteen years less than anyone else.
They just burn out.
We constantly have, we constantly have problems with, with cancer, you know, um...
They do.
I just had cancer cut up my arm. Have anything to do with firefighter service? I don't know.
Could've.
People, people have this all the time. I just think that, um, once you get past fifty-five, you know, it's, it starts getting tough. And, um, we're just asking that y'all, uh, just help us out.
You got it.
Very valid points.
But thank you very much, Mr. Jack, for what you do, I understand how you are with numbers, and, and I applaud you for that. That is a, that's a...
We all understand that, don't we, Robo?
Yeah, we know, we sit here and watch it, we know. But anyway, uh, any more questions?
Okay.
Was there anything else can I do, can I say anything else?
Well, well, thank you for, for addressing that, I, I appreciate your, your comments very much.
Well, these guys are, they're, they're a great group, we're, we're...
No question.
Blessed to have them.
Everyone, I agree.
When times are down, they're still up, so, you know, I applaud them, do what they do every day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, I appreciate that, all right, Chief.
Thank you.
Also, I want to, I want to add a comment on all kind of what Jack had said about, uh, cities not being able to afford, that is not the city of Tifton's case. These changes are gonna be minimum to, uh, the overall cost of the pension plan, uh, this is the right thing to do, this backs the blue, this backs the red. There's a lot of words, a lot of people say these words, but no action is taking place, and I think, uh, we ought to take action and make that commitment to support these men, these public safety folks that put their lives on the line every day for us, I appreciate that, and with that said, I'm ready to make my motion.
Okay, well, we, the motion has been made and seconded. So, if there is no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of these changes, do we need to itemize those back out, or you got those, Jessica? You got everything?
I think the other changes were already in there, he was just making the...
The seventy-five.
The motion was from eight to seventy-five.
Okay, so, that being said, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Done?
Yeah!
[applause]
I'll tell you this, there's not many times that we get a pause.
No, there's not. There's not, we'll tell you that.
Just, just for the record, I can argue both sides of everything.
Yes, you can, yes, you can, okay, all right. Uh, now, we, I think, if I've got my order correct still, we are, um, to the section of, uh...
Number five.
No, we're not on number five, stop it, we're on the ord- ordinance to annex the acreage on Highway one-twenty-five North.
Uh, Mayor, council, just for your information, that, the actual amount that's being annexed is about six point eight acres, that's a portion of the twenty-three point five four.
Okay.
This application was amended previously.
Okay.
Uh, and your ordinance will reflect that.
Reflect that, okay.
There is a less than, except about a ten-foot strip, it's a project that's just only acres.
Okay, so everybody got that? Okay, so it's not twenty-three point five four acres is, is printed on our agenda, it's six point eight acres.
That's right.
So that being said, and this is for the, um, the project submitted by David Deloach, which we spoke about at the, uh, at the workshop, and, and excited about that project if everything moves forward, so I will take a motion at this point regarding that annexation.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, excellent. And now, the flip side of that is the ordinance rezoning, uh, that acreage to change it from County AU to City R twelve, so I will take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Mr. Deloach.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your project, we're excited about that. Uh, the next item on our agenda, we should be back on our regular order of things, is our city manager report.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor. The, the first item, I'd like to, um, ask Wayne to come up and, uh, just give a snapshot of financials as we, uh, one month out of the closing first quarter.
But it's really not...
No, it's just...
Okay.
Can you give one to Hayward and one to Eve, too?
Yeah, I want to...
Okay, okay.
Uh, uh, Madam Mayor and Councilman, uh, this is, uh, basically the standard report like we did last year, uh, going over the budget, uh, for the first page, this is the general fund, and we've gone through two months of the year, which is approximately eighteen percent of the year, so that's why it's kind of like a target thing, you look at expenditures. Um, start off with revenue, uh, the big item here so far this year's date is, is the taxes of three point seven nine five million. Most of that has come from the billing of the property taxes, which the taxes commissioner did for us already for this year. Uh, those will be collected between now and the rest of, rest of the year. Uh, that's the biggest line item out of the total revenues, just over four million dollars. Uh, that's twenty-nine percent of our revenues for the general fund for the year, so the rest of the year will be more smoothed out throughout the year. On the expenditure side, uh, most all the apartments are under budget, except for two smaller departments, which is E S G related, uh, it is basically the shop and the cemetery departments, which are the, still the departments that we have expenditure, expenses going into for the year, but they're not E S, the E S G departments for those, that's a separate, separate line item. Uh, for the, for the first two months, right now, revenues are over expenditures in the general fund of two points, just under two point three million dollars. Uh, on the second page, hotel motel tax fund, uh, revenues to date on it has been three hundred and twenty-six thousand, three twenty-seven, uh, so far expenditures only been four, four thousand three hundred fifty-six. Right now, revenues over expenditures, three hundred twenty-one thousand, nine seventy-one. Uh, big line item there will, uh, that will be checked, be cut to the tourism association for their portion this month, for the first two months. Third page is our water fund. Uh, water fund, uh, so far, for two months, revenues total four hundred seventy-two thousand, expenditures total two hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight seventy, and right now, revenues are over expenditures, just, just under two hundred and three thousand And on our sewer fund, revenues total five hundred fifty-nine thousand, six forty-nine, expenditures for the two, for the first two months, total four hundred forty thousand, nine twenty-six for the public works section, other, other financing sources with another twenty-nine thousand, five forty-three, for total expenditures of forty, four hundred and seventy thousand, uh, four hundred sixty-nine dollars. Our s- revenues over expenditures in this fund, uh, just over eighty-nine thousand. Gas fund, which is on the fourth page, uh, total revenues for the first two months, four hundred thirty thousand, nine thirty-four, total expenditures two hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty, right now, revenues are over expenditures of one hundred fifty-one thousand, it's a change there. Last is our solid, solid waste fund, uh, right now, revenue showing a hundred and fourteen thou- five hundred fourteen thousand, oh thirty-two, total expenditures two hundred nineteen, six seventeen, the right now, revenues are expenditures two hundred ninety-four thousand, four fifteen. Uh, some things that, what, we do have our, the one-time, uh, payment going to G M A for our leases, those do not come to October, so those lease payments will be showing up, that's a one-time thing a year, which several funds have stuff that's being leased out, including solid waste fund, general fund mainly, is where most of it is, where those payments will be coming from, but they, we'll see those for the next month or two, we'll go over the financials the next month or two.
Uh, question about the solid waste fund, that's, uh, it's in, it's in the news, you know, when, when E S G does things, that, does it get charged to the solid waste fund or does it just get absorbed by the city of Tifton in the, in the budget?
Not, not yet, uh, I can tell you both the county and the E S G, uh, we're going to make that decision probably in October when we bring forward our recommendations. I'm under the assumption that, uh, the landfill needs to pay back the general fund.
The same goes for the county. If the county comes and does something for the landfill, then you pay the county, but then it should come out of the, out of the landfill, the money, just the way if the B S G does it. So the, the, landfill needs to be self-sustaining, and we can't have the city paying for some things, the county paying for some things, and it kind of hives to back that, wait a minute, landfill's not self-sustaining, so...
Just, just on the basic, uh, my calculations on the landfill, just as we sit right now, we're ninety-eight thousand dollars over budget, so, uh, all the invoices are starting to come in, we're gonna calculate, uh, both the public works side on the general fund to get the, get that back in line.
When was the last time the tipping fees were increased?
Two thousand eight, fifty cents.
Ten, ten years later, we're still sitting on tipping fees, it just gotta, you know, and I think the county's following, and agreed, you just can't go ten years without raising something like that.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have no questions. John has any questions?
Um, next, I, I'd like to, uh, take just the opportunity, and she's gonna kill me, but to brag, I'm Jessica White, and, and I wanted to let everybody know that, uh, she has just completed her clerk training, and she is eligible now for a master certification as a city clerk. Uh, this is a really high honor, very hard work, uh, that puts in, that goes into this, um, as far as classes, uh, academics, um, mentoring with other clerks, but taking part of the Clerks Association, and I think that, that's, that just a bit well-spoken for Jessica and what she does for Tifton, so we appreciate, um, her achieving that, and she has one more, uh, thing to do, and that's a, actually a project that she has to do for our city, uh, and she has to do that by February, so we're working on some topics to do that, and she'll present that to the, the, uh, the Clerks Association, but we're real proud of her and, uh, and we appreciate your efforts, I wanted to share that.
Jessica, good job! [applause]
And I know the chief, uh, I'm gonna call him back up if, if you would, I, I had a note here, uh, just to brag on, uh, the fire department, you know, just one year ago, just looking back, um, the chief said, hey, guys, we're gonna do an agility test, and they all looked at him like he was crazy, uh, but again, putting on packs, going upstairs, uh, doing things in the line of work, and, and obviously, he takes, he and the staff take it very, very seriously, so, uh, I got to look at that and watch it last year, and, uh, some of the guys said, wow, you know, uh, this is good, I'm glad we're doing it, some of the other ones said, we've, we got a lot of work to do. But I can tell you, again, Denise and what, and Morgan, and what the wellness committee, I'm gonna talk about this every chance I get, the wellness committee is really starting to succeed, and the fire department has taken on a exercise program. And the chief, uh, just did an agility test again this year, they've cut an average of five minutes off the time, just by doing things, uh, you know, on, on a weekly basis for exercising, get their cardio up, but the agility test is pretty strenuous, so congratulations to you and your department for doing that, and thanks.
You know, I told you while ago, thank you for bringing our staff back to where they need to be, so, Brooke, you and Jason.
Yes, sir.
This is the last two firefighters that we hired, that brought us up to snuff, as you say, puts us at lead man shifts again, Jason Dinoz and Brooke Ong. Uh, Brooke's father, Terrell Omar Redd, he's a, he's a firefighter, been with us for thirty years, and, um, so it's just, uh, it's a good thing to see him following in his steps.
Where did he, Redd was here a minute ago.
Son.
No, no, Redd was here. But these guys just got through with eight weeks at the Georgia Fire Academy, they, they passed the flying colors, and as I told them, this is only the beginning, so, this past weekend, I had them an extrication class, Saturday and Sunday, so they passed it, and instructors called and told me, said those guys were absolutely amazing, they really jumped in there, was learning, so, but this is our future, and this is what we're proud of, and this is what we can continue to grow with right here, so...
Well, we're proud of you guys. [applause]
All right, lastly, one more thing, I'm not gonna leave Chief Doughty out, uh, I wanted to brag on he and Captain Hyman.
Where did they go?
They left.
They left.
Well, I can't go into specifics, I, I sent you some, uh, notes on it this week, uh, we're doing some work in the P D now, that a lot of you have been asking about, and I could, I'll just say that we're, we're in deep in the community now, uh, our fingers on the pulse in a lot of illegal activities, namely drugs, uh, and some other activities, uh, and last week, uh, we exercised the first search warrant, uh, and it's, it's starting to produce. Very proud of them, uh, for doing that, they're heading, heading that, that up with intensity, uh, and I'm looking forward to great results, uh, from the P D, so I wanted to share that with you.
Well, here they come.
Stay right back, right?
[laughing]
I, I was just, LT pointed, uh, just bragging on you and Captain Hyman, uh, about what we're doing in the neighborhoods now, watching, uh, some of the activities going on, uh, exercising some of the, um, the equipment, uh, and the dog, and doing things that the community's expecting, and, uh, we just made a, uh, a great testimony of that a couple weeks ago, and we're just certainly proud of what you're doing and how you're gonna get in, in the neighborhoods now, so it's making a huge difference, and I'm glad to share that with y'all.
Congratulations to our P D. All right, excellent report, excellent report. Um, on our board report, if it's okay with you gentlemen, I would like to postpone any discussion on board report, I should've mentioned that when we were approving the agenda, so let's, let's just delay that till our, uh, workshop. And now, we will conclude with our mayor and council reports, and then we will go into executive session, so, Councilman Rowell, anything you want to share with us, or talk about, or?
You know, this, I'm glad we got that behind, got that retirement thing behind us. Uh, we, I, for one, indeed, want to thank the fire department and the police department for their work, in, in, in Tifton, making Tifton a great place to, to live, work, and play. So I thank you guys, and if there's ever anything I should do for you, call me, I got you.
There you go, all right, Councilman Paul?
I agree with what, uh, Councilman Rowell said on that, uh, and I hate the fuzz, gone, but, and, don't look at me, Rob, like you better shut up. I tend to get myself in trouble, I mean, I already, the firemen don't know where I I tend to get myself in trouble, I mean, already, the firemen don't know where I live, so I think I'm okay.
Well, I bet they do.
So, you know, Spud mentioned, and he was, he was there, you know, two thousand and five, in his comment, "An agreement is an agreement." Well, you know, when an agreement has a clause that says, "If you wanna end this agreement, here's what you do," okay? So, it would be different in that if there wasn't a clause that said, "Here's how you get out of it if you wanna end it." So, making a statement that an agreement's an agreement, it makes no sense, because there was a clause to get out, uh...
For either party.
For either party.
Yes.
Either party. I talked to other councilmen that, that were on the, the council at the time, and the only reason, their, their view was, the only reason the city got into it in the first place was because they were moving toward consolidation. If it had, had consolidation not even been discussed or sugued, would've never, the city would've never gotten into this agreement, which does nothing to benefit the city, at the end of the day, I mean, it just doesn't. We're here to represent the city, we're not here to represent the county, even though we live in the county, you've heard my talk about, I don't think the county commission, uh, new members excluded, new members sitting here, represent those of us that live inside the city limits, they've made it clear, we're not their concern, it's okay if we pay taxes and we don't get the service, that's a problem for me, they don't worry about that, and they made it very clear that that's, that's their, their case. But we represent the residents, it's the city, and the water business, the two thousand five agreement was not a good agreement, we had nothing, uh, a chance to get out of it, and we said, "We're ending it." Can't help it if the council, well, we're not gonna acknowledge that you're getting out of it, you know, I say, "We'll read the contract, says we can get out of it." So, Spud's off a little bit there, and I, you know, they, they not here, you know, to, to hear that, so, that's my view on it, and, uh, that's all I got.
That's all you got to say about that?
That's all I can say about that.
Okay, alright, well, I will conclude things, uh, it's been a busy, it's going to be a busy week this week, uh, started off this morning with, um, presentation at Tiff County High School at the PAC for Constitution Week, I tell you, we've got some very impressive high school students that are very involved in, in various organizations through the high school, and, and very glad to be a part of that, and, uh, a proclamation was given this morning to the daughters of the American Revolution, uh, proclaiming this week Constitution Week in Tifton, it is in our country, but also we proclaimed it in, in Tifton. I also wanted to invite my fellow councilmen, there is a presentation tomorrow evening at five thirty at the Agorama from our tourism board, who has contracted with a private consultant to, uh, help us go to the next level from a tourism standpoint and, and marketing and that kind of thing, that presentation will be tomorrow at five thirty at the Agorama, if you'd like to come to that, and then we'll wrap up the week in Pearson with the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Meeting, uh, that afternoon, Friday afternoon in Pearson, if you can go to that, I'm planning on attending, uh, so we can certainly ride together if you'd like to. But, um, as always, it is an honor and a pleasure to serve with you and to serve all of you, and, um, we do need to go into executive session, so I will need a motion from one of you to go into exec, executive session for legal and personnel matters, if you will. So, babe, second, somebody have a second? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll go into executive session. Thank you, everyone.